Okay, well, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the City of Buckeye Regular Council Meeting for October 21st, 2025. We will begin tonight with the invocation led by Councilmember Jermaine Berry, followed by the pledge led by Councilmember Goodman. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to wake up this morning. And, Lord, we actually touched this council, this mayor and council god, and we actually touched our city. God, give us the mind that you have, God. Let us be the leaders you called us to be, God, with integrity, and touch our city and bless them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge? The pledge we use is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you both very much. Can we have the roll call, please?
Member Yonker is absent. Councilmember Berry.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Heggastad.
Here.
Councilmember Beard is absent. Vice Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mayor Orsborn.
Present. Thank you very much. Item number two is comments from the public. Comments from our members of the audience may comment on any non-agenda item of interest. Do we have any speaker request cards for the comment section?
No speaker requests.
Okay. Three is awards, presentations, and proclamations. We have none for tonight. Item number four is consent agenda items and new business approval of items on the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine matters and will be enacted by one motion vote of the city council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. This section may include the approval of minutes from previous meetings. Council for the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 4A as in Adam through 4T as in Tom.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, and consent agenda passes unanimous. Onto public hearings, non-consent and new business, 5A. Council to hold a public hearing and take action on ordinance number 28-25, declaring the document entitled Development Code Amendment Phase Two, as public record adopting the same by reference amending this Buckeye City Code Chapter Seven Development Code as set forth in the Development Code Amendment Phase Two, providing for the repeal of conflicting revisions and providing for severability. Ms. Mandy Woods, you are presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mandy Woods. I'm a principal planner here with Development Services, and tonight I'm going to be presenting Phase Two of the Development Code Update. Now, we have been working on this for a better part of the last eighteen months or so, so this has been an item that council has heard about before, but I'll just step back and just provide a little bit of background to kind of refresh everyone's memory. Before this multi-phase update began, the last major update to the city's development code was in 2010. And then Phase One of this two-phase process was adopted on February 20th of 2024 and became effective in March. So this was last, last year, not this most recent March. And in that phase, we streamlined entitlements, reorganized code sections, and modernized many of our zoning district names and types to be, to align better with the rest of the valley. And Phase Two then began shortly after Phase One adoption, and that is where we are at today. And so this has been a joint effort between city staff and their, our consultant Logan Simpson, as with Phase One. They wrote a portion of these amendments and provided expertise throughout the process. And just some of the overall purposes behind doing this, it's to ensure consistency with state and federal law and other city codes and standards, and also updates to help address any recent challenges or new industry standards or terminology that has come up, and then also opportunities to clarify any standards in existence and streamline the development process wherever possible. And then just a brief note about what we anticipate will follow Phase Two. We expect that we will continue to evaluate the code annually, maybe do one likely smaller Development Code Amendment each year initiated by planning just to address any new items that arise, statute changes, or other housekeeping items. For Phase Two focus areas, these are the same focus areas that we've been communicating since the beginning of this, this Phase Two kickoff. These are uses, signage, development and design standards, land subdivision, and streamlining. I want to note that streamlining doesn't just impact Article Eight, but that is one article where it is a huge focus. There were edits outside of these articles, mostly in the name of those streamlining and cleanup edits throughout the code. For public participation in this process, we have involved and received feedback from a variety of sources. We've worked with city staff, not just within the planning division, but also other divisions, other departments. We've received feedback from Planning and Zoning Commission and council through workshops, and then members of the public and the development community, as well as the Community Advisory Committee, or CAC for short. This is a group of development partners, private firms, attorneys, and basically any other interested parties that expressed interest in being involved in our Development Code Update process. It's a pretty similar group as the CAC that was involved in our Phase One update, with some additions. Overall, these are really, really helpful industry experts. And then we'll have all the, we do have all of the correspondents already listed in the project file in DSD, but just to note that there were hundreds of emails exchanged with the CAC members and other members of the public, the staff, plus virtual meetings and various phone conversations just to discuss the questions that arose throughout During the September 23rd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing for this item, there was one speaker that spoke in support of this item, and then we have one letter of support that was included in the report. I wanted to note that two additional letters were received since the deadline for that report. We received an additional one from builders community, as well as a total. And then this is just a visual timeline, because I like to see pictures sometimes just to see how this all fits together. So Phase Two kickoff was roughly last summer, kind of late spring, and then that led into an initial workshop with engaging the Community Advisory Committee, workshop with P&amp;Z. We started getting those drafts rolling of language to send out to that advisory committee. And then we had two council workshops at the beginning of this year, one in January and in March. And then we continued sending drafts along the way, the last one of which was sent in July. We're now at the hearing stage, and just wanted to note that at the hearing process, the required legal notices were completed in accordance with the Development Code requirements for public hearings. I'm going to hit the highlights of all of the articles. I am not going to cover everything, because we would be here all night, and I don't think anybody wants that. But I'll try to keep it high level, go article by article, and just go over some of the brief changes, and then obviously I'm happy to answer questions once we get to the end. So one note for all articles, we did apply a style guide just to help keep kind of the voice of the code a little bit stylistically consistent, especially because there were multiple writers. And then streamlining changes were made wherever possible as well. So for Article One, which is the general provisions article, the first change that is noted on this slide here is for a new Section 1.8A1A, which pertains to applications following a pre-application. This is really intended to kind of help ease the burden of transitioning from the existing code to a new code for applicants that are already starting the process. Anybody that has already held a pre-application with the city, they've likely made some significant investments into the property that they're wanting to develop, but if they haven't already formally submitted their entitlement requests, the way that our code is currently written is they would be held to whatever standard is in place at the time of formal submittal. This just kind of helps bridge that gap and alleviate some of the hardship that could be caused from this code adoption. And that's, it's within a certain period of time, it's nine months after the PAC, the new provisions automatically will take effect. Just a customer service item that we had identified to help development partners. We also moved some language around in Phase Two. So for the second bullet on the slide, movement of planned area development, PAD procedural language. This is just taking language that has to do with PADs and moving it to a better portion of the overall development code, which is Section 8.6, just trying to group all, all like language together and simplify where possible. And then we also made some clarifying edits to our non-conformities language, which is more commonly referred to as like grandfathered properties or uses, just to make it easier for our staff to understand and apply, as well as the development community. For Article Two, which is our article that lists out all of our zoning districts within the city, we made some corrections to Table 2.1-1. This shows each zoning district that's in the city and how it correlates with our general plan land use designations. There were just some corrections that were needed in order to make sure that it was consistent with our general plan. We also moved our downtown overlay district language from Article Five to Article Two, so that way it was alongside all of the other overlay districts in the city. We discussed the, the single-family flex district, which was a newer concept, and it was intended to kind of fit the missing middle or middle housing product types, such as bungalow communities or build-to-rent communities, as you might have heard them called. And that was the intent of this district. It hadn't yet been utilized, and as part of the, the streamlining process within this code update, we thought it was a little redundant, and all of the product types intended for this new district could easily fit throughout the rest of our existing residential districts. So we went ahead and removed that district just to, to keep it streamlined and simplified. And then consolidation of community master plan, or the CMP district, and our PAD district. I want to note that in Phase One, we had already removed our overlay districts, so now CMP and PAD are just base districts moving forward. We have had some confusion with the difference between CMP and PAD, and effectively they are exactly the same zoning tool. The only difference in our code is just an acreage requirement. And so for consistency with the rest of the valley, who generally refers to it as a PAD or a PUD, we are going to be consolidating this term into just PAD moving forward. This does not harm or revoke any existing CMP entitlements, and basically any existing overlays or base districts will remain intact, keep their respective names in the meantime. But as things are amended in the future, then we can look to, to either convert those or change the names accordingly. Generally, that'll happen with major amendments. For Article Three, this is our use regulations article. We reorganized and modernized Table 3.1-1, which is our table of uses, and then all of the associated use-specific standards and definitions, we just made a similar reorganizations throughout this article. Wanted to highlight some of the new or updated use-specific standards. So for middle housing, which includes duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes, this update was added to be consistent with a new state statute passed HB 2721. For battery energy storage systems, or BES, we didn't previously have any standards in place specific to this use, so these are new provisions that have been vetted by industry professional, professionals, as well as our fire department as well. The wireless facilities language was in existence. These are updates drafted for better design clarity when reviewing future tower requests, as well as better compliance with state and federal law. The marijuana update, so we have marijuana uses, there is existing language in our code for that. The update for this section was drafted in accordance with council direction from a work session back in 2022, to bring our standards generally more in compliance with state statute. And then for car washes and mini-storage, we are instituting new separation provisions. So these will now have to be twenty-six, forty feet or a half a mile apart, and this is just to prevent an oversaturation of these uses throughout the city. For accessory dwelling units, this section, we were already implementing this through policy as of January of this year, but this was another state statute mandated language change. So we have been doing this through policy, now it's going to actually be codified. And then for the last bullet on the slide, backyard fowl, again, another state statute requirement that folded into Article Three here. This will allow a single-family detached residence to have up to six hens, no roosters, in the property's backyard, and that would be subject to enclosure standards and health and safety requirements. However, does not affect an HOA's ability to enact their own rules on keeping fowl. For Article Four, this is our dimensional standards article, so this is your things like setbacks, lot coverage, building height, et cetera. This article was revised to add the agricultural district that was previously missing from this section, so we added it to the rural and residential districts table. So the standards are much more clear for that existing district. We revised our residential dimensional standards to accommodate those wider variety of housing types, particularly the middle housing that I've previously mentioned. And then we removed lot coverage requirements from the majority of our districts. We kept it intact for the higher, or the lower density or more rural character districts, just to kind of help preserve the rural character intended for Ag and R143. But otherwise, it's far simpler to just let setbacks govern lot coverage indirectly, rather than have a separate lot coverage provision for most districts. I'm going to take Article Five into two different slides. So this slide is basically everything but signage. This is all of our design standards. For the first bullet there, this was mostly in response at the request of the homebuilding community. The market has really been changing significantly. We've seen smaller, more affordable, or attainable, whatever word you would like to use, product styles that have emerged, a lot of narrower lots that have become very popular, and we've seen a lot of creative designs come forward. And in response to that, we've relaxed the garage dominance language a little bit. This is pertaining to the percentage of the front of the house that can be garage doors. And we've done this while simultaneously adding more objective design criteria, just to ensure that garage design is top-notch. And this would apply to basically any product type that could have a front-facing garage. And then for the second bullet there, we have additional standards for middle housing, particularly for bungalow communities, which is those build-to-rent communities. We've definitely had some lessons learned as we've dealt with this sort of emerging product type. And in Phase One, we started to add those provisions, and we increased some of the standards in that section this time around in response to some recent projects.
Yeah, Mandy, can I just interrupt? I didn't want to ruin your flow there, but the, the garage dominance language.
Yes.
I, I think our intent previously in previous codes was to limit how much of the front of the house could be garage, so that it wasn't just a, a row of garages that we're seeing for the street scene. And with those smaller lots, that's, it's not very practical, because the smaller lot you get, you still have to have some ability to get garages in it. That's what we're trying to clean up and deal with in, in that specific bullet point?
Mayor, that is correct. We revised those percentages to be in accordance with reality of the market, but while also ensuring high-quality design.
But still on the, the other stuff that is not the smaller lot design, the intent is still that it's not garage after garage after garage that you're seeing from the street, there's, we're limiting that, the dominance of the garage door?
Correct. So it's a tiered approach based on product width, so a wider home is allotted a smaller percentage.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarifying question. For, let's see, third bullet, I think is where I left off. We added some new standards for big box, also known as large format retail. This would apply in addition to our commercial standards, and this is just to kind of help soften some of the massing of really, really large big-box stores and just enhance the design quality of these projects. We revised our commercial and industrial design standards as well, particularly the industrial design standards, which previously primarily just referenced our commercial standards before, so now we have our own standards to ensure really high-quality industrial projects moving forward. We expanded our landscaping and lighting standards. And then for the downtown specific section, which is Section 513.4, we included some downtown specific area plan language recommendations, and this is just to provide some guidance on design and character screening, and then use specific standards that could apply specifically within downtown. Second half of Article Five here, this is just for signage. This section was basically entirely rewritten just to ensure the utmost compliance with Reed versus Gilbert, which was a landmark case that basically said you cannot regulate signs based on content. Didn't necessarily have a ton of issues before, but this locks it in and makes sure that we are, we have a stronger code moving forward, and it's better organized as well. And we've added a new table, 512-1, which clarifies the signage that's allowed by zoning district. We haven't had that previously, so that'll be very, a very helpful tool for staff and for the community to understand what standards apply. We expanded our comprehensive sign plan, or CSP process. A CSP, basically, it allows developments, usually commercial centers, to customize their signage standards for just that development. I like to think of it as kind of like a PAD, but just for signage, if that helps understand what it is. But applicants can propose new sign types now as part of a CSP, so we can continue to encourage design creativity for signage, if there's a sign type that's not explicitly contemplated by the development code. The digital billboards section was largely untouched, except that we are planning for a potential allowance along SR30, whenever that alignment is eventually determined and right-of-way is acquired, in addition to the I-10 and SR85 allowances that are already in the code to date. And then I just have some pictures on the slide there just to indicate, this section in particular was where probably the most graphics were added in the code. There's, each sign type now includes example imagery. There's also measurement guidance on how to measure unusually shaped signs. It should be extremely helpful for staff, but also for the development community as they're submitting signs for review.
Another question, Mandy. We have digital billboards on future State Route 30, does, do, we also contemplate billboards on future I-11 and SR85, or what's the determination of what roads we're looking at?
We didn't add anything for I-11 specifically, but we didn't take away the allowances that were already in the code for SR85.
Okay. Well, we, I guess this is a kind of a living, breathing document, so we'll do updates as we go, and when I-11 is a little bit more defined, then we bring this back and start talking about those signage along I-11?
Yes, Mayor, that, exactly that. This is definitely something that can pivot as those alignments are determined in the future and other needs are, are determined.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For Article Six, which is our land subdivision article, we updated our subdivision terminology to ensure that they're compliant with statute, and just so that there's clarification on when each type applies, as well as updated design standards. So I have two examples on the slide there for exceptionally long block lengths. We have provisions in place now to require an open space connection to break up that, that long block length, as well as T-intersection conditions, or any roadway that would approach in a, in a T-intersection condition, we would be requiring a landscape tract at the end of that roadway, or would be mandating the orientation of the homes on the opposite side of that T, just to ensure that any vehicles that are approaching, the headlights from those vehicles are not going to shine directly into the homes on the opposite side. Just a small thing to provide better design in those scenarios. And then possibly one of the more important changes to this article, so Section 6.4.2 now ties our financial assurances process for Platts. This will now be tied to the release of civil permits instead of the recordation of the final plat, and this just allows a little bit more time and is just a little bit less burdensome for the development community to, to change that. And then throughout the article, there are clarified references to our engineering design standards, as we had really good interfacing with our civil team. For Article Seven, this is the article that pertains to basically all of the review and decision-making bodies. There's a lot of redundant language in this section that's found elsewhere in city code and procedure, so where we could trim, we went ahead and trimmed. And then we also removed Section 7.7, which is the, the hearing officer section. This is not because we don't want to use the hearing officer tool, it just felt unnecessary to have this separate language indicated, as it read like it was creating a new position. Variances are pretty few and far between, so instead, we will be delegating the authority to hear those relatively rare variances in the future to our Planning and Zoning Commission. For Article Eight, this is our, our article that basically deals with all of our entitlement procedures and our review procedures. So for the first bullet point on the slide, this is the bulk of the changes that occurred, which has to do with our site plans and subdivisions now being administratively approved. I'd like to call back to the workshops that occurred earlier this year, where we were starting the discussion about having those administrative site plans and Platts to kind of keep up with trends around the valley and at the state. And then shortly after that, the state kind of made that decision for all the cities and towns by mandating that all site plans and Platts be administratively approved moving forward. So that is kind of the history on that item, and we've updated our language accordingly to match the, the statutory requirements of that. For approval criteria, many of the entitlement types in our code already had approval criteria listed, but we filled in the gaps as kind of part of an effort to make processing a little bit more objective and, and clear as far as what you're reviewing. New Section 8.10, which is design review, I want to stress that this is not a new process for the city. We have been doing design review for residential and commercial projects for a long time, but the procedure was just not clearly spelled out before, so now we have a new section, as well as the site plan section that was already there, that they have been updated to more clearly explain what those processes are, how they differ, and exactly when each process applies in the future. The appeals language also, we had appeals language before in section, new Section 8.14, I think it was 813 before, and we worked with legal on rewriting this section, just so that way it was more comprehensive and addressed more situations, more appeals for different types of entitlements, or reconsideration of decisions, et cetera. So it's just more comprehensive and gives better guidance when we have these come up in the future. For Article Nine, this is our enforcement section. This one was updated in Phase One, and really there were no substantive edits in Phase Two. Really, this was just stylistic changes only to ensure that it was cohesive with the rest of the code update. Article Ten, we're getting close to the finish line here. This is our, our definitions article. This includes some new definitions that are not specific to uses. I want to emphasize that any use definitions appear in Article Three alongside the rest of the use language. We did remove a lot of language. We did remove a lot of language throughout the code stating director or designee, and most of those changed to zoning administrator for clarity. And then we also added or designee to that zoning administrator definition, just to clean up the language and take out unnecessary phrasing throughout the code. We removed definitions that do not appear elsewhere in the development code, and then also created new section 10.4, which is all of our signage-related definitions. And then for our appendices, the bulk of these changes were for B and C actually, which are our obsolete zoning district standards. So for Appendix B, which is development standards, A, these were updated to be consistent with the edits that were made to Article 4, primarily removal of lot coverage requirements, except for rural residential, to kind of preserve that rural character. And then there were modifications to our obsolete district uses. This was primarily to add uses that were previously, they previously required a zoning administrator interpretation, because they weren't explicitly called out. So we added things like best, utility facilities, solar generation, et cetera, and just add some clarity as to where they would fall in the obsolete district. And then as a kind of courtesy and in response to several requests that we had received from, from downtown, we have a special use zoning in a portion of the downtown overlay district. This district was more intended for like floodplain scenarios and lots don't have that kind of constraint on them. But under current standards, these homes that are zoned special use are not able to develop a home, even though they're right in downtown. So we are adding a provision that would allow one dwelling unit per lot within just the downtown overlay district area, subject to the downtown residential district development standards. Could also rezone, but this is something that kind of helps bridge that gap in the meantime. To kind of sum everything up with the analysis portion of this, we see that this, this development code amendment is going to have a lot of benefits. We're hoping for very improved customer service all around, a lot of modernized requirements, improved and clarified procedural language for, for all parties, staff and the development community. And then ultimately, that will continue to result in more attractive and high-quality projects for the city. Do not have any outstanding issues from reviewing departments and divisions. And at the September meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item. With that, the recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance 28-25. I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mandy. That was fantastic and thorough, very thorough. Appreciate the, the presentation tonight. We will first open a public hearing and hear from the public. I have two speaker request cards. The first is Mr. Kurt Jones.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, Kurt Jones. I'm with Tiffany and Bosco. We're at 2525 East Campbell Back Road, Phoenix, Arizona, 85016. Here tonight in behalf of Howard Hughes, we worked with Mandy and her team throughout this process. It's been a long process. We were, basically were sent each one of those articles that Mandy went through, given a timeline to provide comments. She ended up setting up Zoom meetings with us and going through each one of the sections. It was a heavy lift for them. We appreciate all the input we were given for that and want to support the ordinance update tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker request card, Mr. Stephen Rue.
Thank you, I'm Steve Rue, 25650 West Primrose Lane here in Buckeye. I'm a member of the White Tank Mountains Conservancy, and I was also on the Community Advisory Committee for this project. As a member of the committee, I was able to present recommendations from the Conservancy for some sections on this update. And I know that several of those recommendations haven't made part of this update. And I was also told that other parts of our presentation have been kept with the possibility of contributing to future efforts. And so, speaking for myself, I approve the, the work that was done, that was done with us on this development code update, and I really thank Mandy Woods for working with the Conservancy on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Appreciate you participating in that and, and all you do for the city of Buckeye. Okay, any other speaker request cards that I don't have up here?
No additional speakers.
No additional speakers. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions on Agenda Item 5A? Not seeing any before, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no questions, but just comments. Thank you for having a highly collaborative process. I think the, the two speakers that came forward are testaments to that, that seeking input and then taking that input seriously and incorporating it where it made sense. So I really appreciate all of that, and thank you to our community members for participating in this. Very well done.
You stole my thunder, Councilman Goodman. I agree with, with all of that. This has been a long, long process. Lot of meetings, a lot of input, and like both of the speakers had said, you guys are taking that input back and processing it for all of the stakeholders in this. So not only trying to protect the city and future growth that's happening, but also make sure that the investments that are being made by the developers or home builders, or retail or industrial, whatever use it is, that, that those investments are being protected also. So appreciate all of the work on it. Okay, Counsel, Agenda Item 5A, what? It's your pleasure. We closed the public hearing. Got it, yep, I'm sorry. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 5A as an Adam.
Second.
Have a motion for approval on Agenda Item 5A in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? And 5A passes unanimous. Thank you very much, Mandy.
Thank you.
Item 5B, Counsel, to take action on the professional services agreement. PSA between the city of Buckeye and Arizona Municipal Corporation and Smith Group, Inc., Michigan Corporation, related to the professional consulting services to lead the envisioning, planning, and conceptual design efforts for capital improvement program, CIP Project 109570, City Hall campus, and authorize the city manager to execute and deliver said agreement on behalf of the city of Buckeye. Mr. Braveboy, how are you?
How are you, sir?
I'm doing good. You're up.
So, good evening, Mayor Osborne, members of the council. My name is James Braveboy. I'm a project manager with the CIP program, Program Management Officers. And I will be briefing you this evening on the City Hall envisioning project. So our back, our purpose and our background, so this project is to give us a vision and a role of Buckeye's future City Hall. And this is one of you gentlemen's strategic plan items, so I want to just point that out. And none of the key questions on what, where, and how have been answered yet. This is the process that's going to help us explore those questions together. And the council, you will be engaged early and throughout this entire process to help shape this direction. So the action for tonight is to approve the contract award to Smith Group. I want to also point out that every picture that you're going to see tonight, or every photo that you're going to see in the slideshow, is a Smith Group project, except for the exception of the one in the right-hand corner, which is our Tempe City Hall that you see there. So the scope and the approach to this project, they're going to help us explore potential sites, functions, and development opportunities. Once again, we're going to engage the city council and staff throughout this entire process. Smith Group will help us engage and ask the right questions. They're going to develop data for us, and they're going to have some creative answers. The deliverables that we want, and we have asked Smith Group to give us, is our vision framework, our site analysis, they're going to provide us with conceptual designs, renderings, and of course, what everybody cares about. How much is this thing going to cost? They're going to give us a cost model, and they're going to also give us a phased roadmap. This is our project roadmap. So over the next 22 weeks or in this, I want everyone to understand that this schedule is very, very fluid, because once again, we want the city council to be involved. We know you gentlemen are very, very busy. So we have worked it out with Smith Group to be fluid with this, and we will be able to adjust some dates, we will be able to adjust some workshops. And specifically, I didn't realize this is going to be very difficult to see here, but I see it now, is the box-in areas, because you see in Week 5, which will be sometime in the middle of December, we're asking for a leadership workshop. And in that leadership workshop, that is an action item for the council and with the city leaders. Then in Week 7, Smith Group would like for us to select, and they're going to help us select city halls that we would like to go out and we would like to visit to see how their city hall has been designed by Smith Group, and whether it's not been designed by Smith Group. And so throughout this entire project roadmap, you're going to see workshops, they're going to have community involvement, they will have staff involvement, they will have city council involvement, they will have the leadership involved as well. And then at the end, we were going to have, once again, bring you all together again, and then we're going to have you look at the conceptuals before we even go to the next phase, if the council chooses to go in that direction. Benefits and the impact of this, of course, we wanted to be community-driven. Early financial foresight and phasing options. The roadmap for future phases, master plan, design, and of course, construction. The conceptual that you see to the left is one of Smith Group's ones, and then that's actually the finished project that you see to the right, that is the Tulluson Civic Center that started, started building in June of 2021, and they opened that up in December of 2022. Consultant selection. So the request for qualifications was issued on June 10th, 2025. Four firms submitted proposals. Our evaluation criteria was experience, approach, and understanding of Buckeye's vision. On that board was myself, along with Deputy City Manager Sedovich, and three directors. We had a very diverse group of selections. Smith Group was selected for their deep experience in design and visioning. They have a very strong record to include community engagement and approving success in helping cities define their future government centers. I want to also add for Smith Group, they are in the top 20 of 300 architectural firms in the country. They are currently ranked number seven in city design, building design, excuse me, and construction. So we selected a very, very good architectural group to help us lead the City Hall envisioning project. And once again, to point out, Tulluson Civic Center is one of theirs, the Sam Garcia Library that's down in Avondale, and then the Aloy City Hall. Contract summary and next steps. So this contract award is for $458,000. The duration is 22 weeks, again, once I said, but this is very fluid. Our next steps for this is the council to approve this contract, kick off and get those early workshops going, stakeholder community engagements, and conceptual design and development. So once again, I want to also point out again, that the what, where, and how has yet to be decided, but you all will have a very, very, and a lot of input on what direction the City Hall will be in. And this is some concept inspirations and some questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. You said several times that you all, that we would have input. I, I think that's secondary to what the public is going to provide. I mean, this is their building, and we just have an opportunity to do the city's business in it. So I would believe it's a part of the process that we are going to engage the community and what this will eventually become. I think, and just to share a story, I was very fortunate to be a part of a Stramout Community College when it came out of the ground at Thomas and Dyser Road in Avondale. And the founding president there had a vision for that campus. He wanted it to be a very inviting place, because higher education was new to the West Valley. And that when people stepped onto that campus, he wanted an immediate feeling of belonging that this was a higher education opportunity that they deserved to have. I think whatever we come up with, with a city hall design, it needs to have that feel that the residents of Buckeye belong there and their business is to be conducted there. So it's not so much what we think, but what they think, and that I think is going to be extremely important to me, but looking forward to getting this effort kicked off.
Mr. Mayor Osborne, Councilman Goodman, you are absolutely correct. The community will also have their say on this. We have several workshops for the community as well.
Great. Any other questions from council? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I just agree with Councilman Goodman, that the community has to be involved. We have to get out, and not just a placated type of contact, but we really do need to get out and speak to the people, and possibly even show them some light presentations of what we're looking at, to see whether they like or don't like. I have no idea which direction they may come from, but I think, as the councilman said, we, it's their building. We need to represent them from this building, and we need to find out what their feelings are about, and what even some of the design ideas. Maybe something that I don't like anything to do with, but it's not my building, it's their building. So I totally agree on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions. So Agenda Item 5B, Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 5B as an void.
Second.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor Houston, second from Councilman Goodman for the approval of Item 5B. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? And 5B passes unanimous. Great job, great presentation. That's your first time presenting to council?
Yes, sir, it is.
First of many. Thank you. We only want to build one city hall, though, so we'll only present this on City Hall just one time.
Yeah, Osborne, if I could just get all mine on consent.
All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Item number six, comments from Mayor and Counsel. Any comments tonight?
No comments.
All right.
I feel like I'm...
Hogging the show?
Yeah, pretty much. I just want to extend congratulations to our city manager. He informed me the other day that he is now certified or credentialed as a city manager, so was quite an arduous process, as I understand, but congratulations. And also would like to congratulate him on becoming a newly certified scuba diver.
I'm going to have a collection of letters behind my name.
You got a whole bunch of them. And last, I just want to point out something on the agenda, several things that, just highlight Rob Roach and his team, we had $4.8 million worth of grant requests. He's got a pretty good batting average with bringing some of that stuff back into Buckeye. And just, it's $4.8 million, if we're successful in all of these, it's $4.8 million that doesn't come out of our taxpayers' pockets. So it's just bringing new, new resources, so keep up the good work, Rob.
Great, thank you, Councilman Goodman. All right, item number seven, city managers' report and summary of current events.
Thank you, Mayor. This week is the 24th Annual Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Arizona Cities and Towns sets aside each, a week each year to recognize services cities and towns provide, as well as honor those elected officials, staff, and volunteers who serve in municipal government. What you'll be seeing in the city of Buckeye is every day, our social media pages will highlight a different service area that our city, with the services that those, that we provide, and the people that provide those to our residents. That started on Sunday, and it will continue until Saturday of this week. And then the second thing that I have is that the 10th traffic signal within the last 12 months has just been activated within the city, 10th new traffic signal within the last 12 months. This one is at the intersection of Roosevelt and Jackrabbit. We have removed the portable signals, and the permanent signal is in full operation. Anybody traveling in that area will notice that the internally illuminated street signs are not operational yet, those have... Those have been, had a scheduling delay, and as soon as they do arrive, they will be installed and the light will be fully functional. That is all I have. Thank you.
That just reminds me of, the little lights are not twinkling, Doug.
The little lights are...
You're going to miss it, yeah. Movie quotes. All right, thank you for that. In that, you can start to see what the future of that intersection, and actually, that entire corridor looks like, from I ten all the way south to Van Buren, and Van Buren's lighting is under construction also. So we'll start to see that entire corridor completely change from a traffic perspective on the east side of the city of Buckeye. So it's exciting to watch all that stuff come into play, and then exciting to watch all of the improvements that are being made, and nearly complete on Miller Road. That, that is, it's fun to drive on now. It was fun during construction, but it's much more fun now when you can free-flow through there. Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item number eight, proposals for future agenda items. Any from Counsel? I'm seeing none. Item number nine, with nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned.